So it looks like everyone is here. We will go ahead and call to order the May 27th meeting of the North Idaho College Board of Trustees. We typically read the mission statement at the beginning of every meeting. And rather than put other trustee on the spot without coordinating ahead of time, I'll go ahead and read that. If I can find it. There it is. "North Idaho College meets the diverse educational needs of students, employers, and the northern Idaho communities. It serves through a commitment to student success, educational excellence, community engagement, and lifelong learning." Just as a reminder, I would suggest if you're not speaking, go ahead and mute your mic, which will eliminate the background noise. We have a quorum. We need to review the minutes or approve the minutes. And I would ask if anyone has any additions or deletions required for the minutes from last meeting. Please say so, otherwise they will stand as printed. Hearing no comments, we will go ahead and move on. There is no one signed up for public comment. And so we will go straight to our constituent reports. And we're going to put on Tom Green for the Staff Assembly. So Tom, go ahead.
Good evening, Chair Dunlap and Trustees. Thank you for this opportunity to address you tonight on behalf of Staff Assembly. At the May 14th Staff Assembly meeting, we had major, several major end of the year reports, a healthy discussion on step increases in the budget. We first heard from Josh Gettle, Senior Accountant.
Can you hear me now?
At the Office of Finance and Business. Josh gave a rundown about upcoming changes to payroll, including that in July, employees will begin getting paid every other Wednesday instead of every other Friday. Josh said this will give employees and supervisors additional time to submit time entry.
Yes. Hello?
We also heard from Steve Kurtz, who caught us up on the accreditation process. As you know, NIC earned higher marks for accreditation only a few weeks ago. Major kudos to Steve for helping the college navigate through this process. Staff Assembly then engaged in a robust discussion on salary step increases and how step increases would fit in with the upcoming budget. Excellent points were made all around during this discussion. Ultimately, though, the majority of staff feels that now is not the appropriate time to ask for step increase until we have more information and a clear picture of enrollment. This sentiment was expressed by the majority in a vote taken during the meeting. We also read out all the nominees for the annual staff appreciation awards. The winners, of course, were announced the morning of commencement. Congratulations to all of them. And plus, we heard the results of the Staff Assembly officer election, which were as follows. The new vice chair, and of course, as chair-elect, will be Sarah Martin, who is currently secretary. The new secretary would be Carrie Simonette. Senators Kathy Albin, Susie Dean, Melissa Mwenney, Christopher Healy, with alternates Teresa Henderson and Colleen Hoffman. This is my last meeting as chair, with Jeff Davis taking my place as soon as this meeting is over. It's a great honor to serve an incredible group of people. And you trustees, I wish you the very best. Unless there are any questions, that's my report. Jeff's here too, and he's got a tie on. So if I could introduce Jeff. Hello to everybody.
Hello, everybody. I very much look forward to a very uneventful year, but I'm not sure that's what I bought into. This is a very exciting opportunity, and I look forward to seeing all of your faces every month and doing the best I can for my Staff Assembly, my colleagues, my Board of Trustees, and my President's Cabinet. Thank you.
Jeff, thank you very much for stepping up to the plate. And Tom, thank you for your service to the college. It's greatly appreciated. Any comments or questions for Tom?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Trustee Wood.
Would just like to echo what you said. It's always a strange time of the year when we say goodbye to people that have worked with us for a solid year. Tom, you've done a very nice job. I do appreciate the comments you've made about what's on our agenda tonight. I think that's very thoughtful of the group. And welcome aboard, Jeff. Enjoy it, Tom.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments for Tom? All right, Faculty Assembly, Chris Pelchat.
Chair Dunlap, fellow board members, President McLennan, and everyone else on Zoom here today. Here's my report for Faculty Assembly for our May meeting. We started off with some reports from Senate Chair and myself. Point of interest for things that I talked about to faculty during my report, I thank the faculty members for their participation in the commencement passing of the diploma video. A lot of folks filmed their sessions and sent them in. And I think that turned out to be a unique addition to the virtual commencement experience. We've also had a lot of discussion amongst faculty of finding ways to have communication between faculty assemblies. And so we've set up an online discussion board using Microsoft Teams that we're going to kick off next year. Faculty Assembly tends to not be long enough to cover all the things we want to do from time to time. And so we're hoping those discussion boards will allow faculty to have more voice. So when we come to things like this, we have more substantial things to say. The new business that we had during Faculty Assembly, we voted on the Senate roles for faculty, which Steve will introduce those folks here in a second. We also voted on Faculty Assembly nominations for next year. And the folks that will be serving next year are as follows. I'm going to stay on as chair for next year. Both the vice chair and secretary are going to stay in place also. So Brian Hanaford, who is vice chair this year, will be next year, as well as Joson Lee, who is secretary. A new person coming on is Kristi Mendoza, and she will be our treasurer. We solicited some interest in joining the Tenure Policy Procedure Committee. It's been asked to form a group of faculty to review the policy and procedure for tenure next year. And that committee will last the full duration of the year with the hope of moving into a new tenure process in fall of '21. The Executive Committee for Faculty Assembly has been doing some work on the Constitution and Bylaws. And we made some edits to both of those documents, and we had our first reading at Faculty Assembly. We just presented the changes. And then at our next assembly meeting in August will be our second reading. And our hope is that we will have drafts of those new, the new Constitution and Bylaws to the Board come September. We also had a robust conversation about our approach to fall courses. There's a lot of conversation going on, as you can imagine, amongst faculty with our current situation and what fall is going to look like. And we want to make sure that we have the maximum flexibility to meet the needs of our students, as well as our faculty. And so we put out a request to the administration to allow us to start planning now as soon as possible for fall to make sure that the academic experiences we're providing are as top-notch as we can get them to be. We closed assembly with a presentation about the payroll changes that are coming up this summer. And that was it for May. This concludes my report. Does the Board have any questions for me?
Thank you, Chris. Any comments or questions for Chris? You're off the hook, Chris.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, I couldn't unmute fast enough. I just also want to thank Chris for his leadership, and somehow they've wrangled him into doing the two-year tour. So great working with you for this year, and look forward to having you back this coming fall.
Likewise. It's been a great year meeting all of you and just listening in.
Chris, we're very glad to have you here again this next year and appreciate your service this past year as well. All right, Senate, Steve Kurtz.
Good evening, Chair Dunlap and Board of Trustees. The honor to serve as Chair of the Senate for this next year. First, I'd like to thank Ben Chisita for his leadership over the last year, as there was a lot of board policies that needed to be altered, be revised before the accreditation visit. They went above and beyond. The executive team, I'd like to thank Leonard Lambert, Gerald Mathis, Lisa Kellerman, and Catherine Tansky for their leadership over the last year. They met twice a month. Normally, we meet four times a semester. Just appreciate the time and effort with the senators, and we accomplished quite a bit. I'd like to introduce the, if I can share my screen. I apologize, I had it ready to go. And... There we go. We have Max Mendez serving as vice chair. Lisa Wilcox serving as parliamentarian. Claire Hosenger is corresponding secretary. And Ben Chisita is, of course, serving as past chair. At the last meeting, we had a second reading of the Institutional Review Board Policy and Procedure. It passed, now goes on, I believe, it is in the administration's hands. Over the next year, looking forward to implementing the procedure with Board Policy Review 2.0104. Just give you a preview of the board items that will be reviewed by a committee led by the past chair. So Ben will still be with us, working with the revisions. So looking forward to working with Ben, as well as the committee. And just wanted to appreciate the opportunity to serve the Senate. But first, I wanted to at least show on a screen the members of the Senate. So we have on the faculty side Angela Earnhardt, James Love, Max Mendez, Josh Meisner, Jeff Carr, Brandon Leonard, Ben Chisita, and Lisa Wilcox, serving with Mitch Carter and Shane Stockham as alternates. On the staff side, we have Kathy Albin, Susie Dean, Christopher Healy, Melissa Mwenney, Elisa Carpenter, Claire Hosenger, Heidi Schrader, and myself, serving as senators for the next year. So congratulations to the senators for their election and looking forward to a productive year. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Steve. Any questions or comments for Steve? Well, thank you for stepping up to the plate and being with us this next year as well.
You're welcome.
Next is the President's Report, Dr. McLennan.
I told myself I would remember to unmute, and I did not. A lot of that going on. Thank you, Chair Dunlap. I'm going to keep my report relatively brief. Normally, I would spend quite a lot of time talking about COVID-19 and the college's response to that, lessons learned and whatnot, but you see that as an agenda item, under information item, at the bottom of the agenda. So I won't go into that at this point. I do want to go talk just a little bit about, and this is related to COVID-19, and to follow up on discussions that I've had with each of the board members in our earlier budget discussions about the concept of a virtual college and lessons learned from COVID-19 and ramping up our efforts to create more access to North Idaho College and to emerge out of COVID-19 in a position of strength. The conversations around a virtual college have begun internally. I'll be creating a planning group to help build out the concept and follow that up very likely within the next month or so with a board workshop to begin conveying what that architecture might look like. So I don't have a lot to add at this point, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Dr. McLennan. Any comments or questions for the President? Hearing none, we're going to move on to old business. To have one second reading of the FY21 general budget, along with tuition and fees. Before we jump into that, I'd like to make a couple of comments. There are a number of items that we may or may not choose to approve individually and/or delay. And so I just want to read through five of those items very quickly. And then, Chris, we'll turn it over to you. I know you need a decision on tuition and fees tonight. So that's one of the topics. The others include how to handle tax increases. We may or may not decide to do that tonight. Another is what to do with regard to increments for faculty and staff. Another has to do with outreach centers and how that impacts the budget and any decisions that may need to be made with regard to those. And then lastly, whether to delay or not, the approval of the final budget. So with that, Chris, I'll turn it over to you. And then as we work our way through what you need us to do, then we can maybe address some of these other items as well.
Members of the Board, thank you again for the opportunity to present the FY21 budget. We've discussed how this is a very unusual budget. And so we'll just hit a couple of the highlights tonight as we go through this. And then I will definitely be happy to yield for questions or further discussion. As we go into the budget this next fiscal year, the things that have changed from the prior reading, the first reading, is a proposed 3% tax increase. That would yield $479,000 in additional revenue, which would bring our revenue change year-over-year to a negative 5.86% year-over-year in revenues. On the expense side, two changes to note here. One is we have removed the expense for operating outreach centers in Bonners Ferry and in the Silver Valley and included that in the proposal to suspend operations at those two centers. And we've garnered that savings here in the expense lines. And so total expenditures year-over-year, we've reduced spending by $2 million. Compared to last time, you'll note that we're proposing at this point a budget deficit of $754,708, just looking at operations going forward. But we've included the 5% holdback allocation from the state. So since we met last month on the first reading, the state has let us know that there is an absolute 5% holdback and that we should plan for that and that it would be considered the floor of any future holdback. And there could potentially be more. And so since that is firmed up, we've included that here. That 5% holdback is $918,670. So factoring in that, we would be looking at a deficit budget of $1.6 million prior to any consideration of steps. With a 2% step, that deficit would grow to $2.2 million. With a half step, that would be $1.9 million. So in this budget proposal, we are essentially asking the Board for authority to use reserves between $1.6 million and $2.23 million. I'd like to go ahead and just move over to tuition at this time.
Chris, would you like us to wait to ask questions, or should we ask questions along the way?
I'm happy to take questions now.
Okay. I noticed you have this, I'm sorry, this is Todd Banducci. I noticed you have this without salary impact. And we did hear during the constituent reports that it sounds like the folks have stepped back and put forward that they would be okay to not have the step at this time until this was a better understood situation with the budget. Did I gather that correctly? And is that why we are comfortable showing this without salary impact at this time?
I would share that I believe Staff Assembly provided that guidance, that they understood the situation. I don't know that that same guidance has come from Faculty Assembly. I can defer to Chris Pelchat on that if there's been a change.
The resolution that we put forward last month still stands.
Thank you. So with that, we've proposed multiple scenarios for the Board's consideration. Trustee, did that answer your question?
It does. I have more input, but I'm going to wait, let you move on. And then I suspect at some point, we'll have a debate on this, and we can share several thoughts at one time in a coherent fashion.
Moving on to tuition and fees, would just let the Board know that we're proposing no tuition and fee increase this year for any status of student. So in District, I District, Washington, WU, and out of state would all stay the same year-over-year from a student general tuition and fee standpoint. And then moving on to the college as a whole. The total institution budget, you can see here, we're proposing a general fund expense budget of $48 million, fee-based budgets of $2 million, service budgets of $5.4 million. Our grants, we're forecasting to be similar to this year at $7 million for a total FY21 budget of $62.6 million compared to $64.6 million in the current fiscal year. Chair Dunlap, I'm happy to address any specific area or stand for questions.
Questions for Chris Martin?
I don't have a question, but... Someone else want to speak? I'm sorry, this is Todd.
Yeah, Todd, go ahead.
All right. I guess I'm going to ask some questions, but I want to, I guess I'll say where I'm at also. And I got a couple of thoughts. Chris, as we've looked at the closing of the outreach centers, one of my concerns is winter travel for those trying to come over Fourth of July pass from the Silver Valley, if they need to attend class physically, which certainly would be CTE generally, and there are some others. And the trip from Bonners to Sandpoint wouldn't be as arduous, but still could be a challenge. I've recently been in both locations, and you know, up at Clark Fork and up to Bonners and up in that area. That still could be a challenging drive under North Idaho winter conditions. About how many students do we think that this will impact if we close those outreach centers? Because safety is certainly a consideration, maybe not overriding, but certainly one of them. Do we know how many kids it impacts or students?
Chair Dunlap, Trustee Banducci, we did look at the credit hour production of both of those individual centers, and I don't have the actual head counts, but I do have the credit hours. Based on that, I would note that students taking CTE classes currently are traveling to the Parker Center, whether they're in Bonners Ferry or the Silver Valley currently.
Right. Yeah, so it's really the academic transfer kids, students, I shouldn't maybe not say kids. That's why I was wondering, I figured that number would be a subset of it, because some of the stuff just requires in-person. So I didn't know how much the distance learning, the virtual that we've worked on and gotten better at this last semester, you know, how well that mitigates it, what the numbers are.
Chair Dunlap, Trustee Banducci, that is our plan, is to continue improving. I think we learned a lot this past spring, specifically on the service side, how we can offer services virtually better than we've done in the past, as well as creating a more robust offering for virtual offerings for transfer students. Dr. McLennan, I apologize, I saw your hand up.
No, I was just going to just add, just similar to what you said, Chris, and add that while it's a... Under consideration is a physical closure, there's certainly an intent, again, going back to the virtual college and looking at the ways that we're serving students, and even beyond Bonners and Kellogg, the ability to serve remotely is something that is a priority in terms of going into the future with this. So certainly, services will still be made available, but the physical presence would be pulled back.
Right. I guess if it's okay, I'll give an input, and everybody else can weigh in after this. I guess based on Chris's answer and Rick's additional discussion, I guess a couple of thoughts. One is I'd like to see us pursue the virtual college concept as President McLennan has described to us. I think there could be some considerable savings and some synergy. I think it sounds like we could do it at a very low cost. But I think beyond that, and trying to refine some of what we did this past semester, I think we'd be best served if we sit pat as same as we can right now to not rock the boat. I think we just need to be in a holding pattern until we have more clarification. You know, what does that 5% holdback become from 5%? We're already looking at some reserves and savings. So personally, in my opinion, I'd say no step increase. I'd say no tuition and fee increase, no tax increase. I don't think we need to shock the system in any one of those areas. And I think the public would not react well to a tax increase, especially with as many that have struggled financially or out of work still. You know, especially if I'm a faculty or staff and I don't get my step increase, well, I really don't need you to put sand, or excuse me, salt on that wound and then give me a tax increase. So, you know, and tuition, I like the idea that we're going to try to hold that back. Because I just don't think there's any sticker shocks that we want right now. And I will mention one more thing. This is a little bit outside the envelope here, but I asked some questions and tried to get more information about sabbaticals. Because if I'm closing two outreach centers, and that may be what we need to do, you know, and hopefully, it's a very limited number of people we put at any more risk traveling. But if we have to close two outreach centers, and this is not about the individuals getting the sabbaticals, but I find it hard to justify paying for two sabbaticals. And I have a couple of thoughts I'll share very quickly. One was, and I've talked to several instructors, so I'm not pulling this out of the dark side of the moon here. One of the thoughts was regarding sabbaticals, it was the recommendation to maybe offer an alternative. Rather than a paid sabbatical, requires NIC to pay other instructors to pick up the vacated classes, allow instructors to petition for a semester where they teach 15 hours of online-only classes. This would exempt them from their on-campus hours requirement, allowing them time for study, reflection, et cetera, without incurring additional costs to the college. While some might argue this is not the same as a real sabbatical, it could also be argued that NIC is not a research university either. And then from a different instructor, I talked about it. And the question was, okay, and what are our rules on sabbaticals? Is it a first-time sabbatical? Is it a repeat sabbatical? Is there a timeline? You know, if you have one every five years, 10 years, 20? So even thinking in that line, if it was just a one-time only, the question is, you know, we're not a land-grant college, we're not a four-year college, we're not a research institution, we're a community college. And you come back to the fundamental question of are sabbaticals even appropriate in the first place? And again, notwithstanding the individuals that have had them in the past or have them now. But as the other board members can attest, I've never been a big proponent of sabbaticals at a junior college, a community college. You know, the question is, what are they able to produce or what they would have been producing for the students in their teaching obligations during the paid leaves? And how significant is it? And is it a reflection of our judgment, NIC's judgment, in this extremely difficult, unusual circumstance if we're paying for sabbaticals while we're closing stuff down, we're not giving steps? And so, and that's kind of a sidebar, but I think that needs to be revisited too. And apparently, that's not in the purview, I guess, of the trustees. It used to be when I first came on the Board, and that has changed. But I think that, I don't know if it's too late for those to be reviewed also. But I think right now, if we're this far in debt, I think just about everything's got to be on the table. I'm done. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Trustee Wood?
Thank you. Well, I think tonight that we really need to have some good discussion tonight and a decision on whether we're going to take a tax increase or not. I do see the tuition proposal as flat. I understand that, support that. When you look at all the community colleges in the state, we're just, we're the highest, but not by very much. And so I think it's responsible that we don't try to increase tuition at this time. I would, my preference is to delay to adopt the budget, the full budget, until September. I think we can set tuition and any kind of tax increment tonight. And when we have more data about enrollment, we can make better decisions about the entire budget. The tax increase is something that I've certainly given a lot of thought of, just as all of you. And our last meeting, I suggested that we need to really take a look at what we've done to make sure that we could, in good faith, go out and ask for that. So some of the things that have mattered, that have had an impact on my decision tonight... So some of the things that have mattered, that have had an impact on my decision tonight is, number one, we have cut programs. We've cut the two programs that Todd just referenced with, with the ability to try to do them virtually, which is great. But that's a lot of money. We have also looked at taking, we've cut over 2 million altogether from our budget and by reducing spending. And we are, if you look at our track record, we haven't taken a tax increase in a very, very long time. So we're proposing dipping into our fund balance by a tremendous amount of money. And we're in a position where at some point you can't continue on without going toward a tax increase. So when you look at the evaluations that Chris provided to all of us in a previous meeting. We are in a position now because of home valuations, that we are actually at a reduced rate if we take a 3%. And so that has to be taken into consideration too. We will have less impact on homeowners by taking a 3% than staying just status quo. And that 3% over time is going to help us get some programs back that we need, fill up our fund balance. And so I, my mind's been completely changed. I do think now is the time, the appropriate time that we consider the 3% tax increase.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, trustee Howard.
I'd like to ask a question of you. There was some discussion earlier on. And Christie just alluded to the fact that we may do a piecemeal kind of approval on some of the areas of the budget. Leaving other ones unresolved until we have more information by way of enrollment, what the holdback's really going to be. Any federal programs that may come along that would help, help us with our fiscal issues. And so let me ask you, what of, what issues do you need to have resolved tonight? That we can't hold back until our June or maybe even July meeting if necessary?
Chair Dunlap and trustee Howard, tonight we would, we would request the board consider a tuition fee increase. That's the piece that's time-sensitive. In the event that there's not an approved budget, we would also request consideration for a continuing resolution so that we can operate into July or July and August.
When you say a fee increase, you're talking about?
Appropriate annual tuition and fees as well as course fees.
But approving them as they are, if we're not going to be increasing them, right?
Correct, yes, sir. If you were to consider a 5% increase or something different, we just ask for that tonight so that we could inform students and families and set up appropriate payment plans and billing tables.
And what would be the timeframe that you would need for a final resolution of the budget? Understanding that we can probably reopen the budget at any time to make amendments. But in order to do this in a, in a reasonable way, so that people have an understanding of what the budget is for the year. What would be the timeframe for that? Would be July, August, September? What would it be?
I would share, it would be August or September, because that will give us a much greater view of where our enrollment's actually coming in at. If there was a tax increase, we would need to know that by the August board meeting.
So you need a resolution, if we're going to do it piecemeal like that, you would need that the board approve its position on tuition and fees. And, and that we also approve a continuing resolution, allowing the college to go forward with its budget as if it was last year's budget.
Yes, sir, correct.
The, I guess I want to make a comment, even though I'm inclined to make a motion to do just that. Set the tuition and fees with no increase and provide the, the college administration with a continuing resolution. The idea of the tax increase or not increase, can that hold until August or September?
Chair Dunlap, trustee Howard, it can hold until the end of August. We have to notify the county of a levy increase prior to the beginning of September.
Okay, so we can address that at our August meeting if necessary. I would like to make a motion that we hold tuition and fees at their present level and provide a continuing resolution to the college. That it continue operations based upon the 2020 budget.
A motion's been made to approve tuition and fees with no increases. And to approve the proposed continuing resolution that is in tab two. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Yeah, Mr. President, I'd like to amend my motion to include in it that we address the, the issue of the remainder budget issues no later than our August meeting.
Trustee Wood, is that an acceptable amendment to your second?
I, I think I understand from Chris that that, that would be our timeline. So yes, that's fine.
Is there any discussion with regard to trustee Howard's motion?
Yeah, this is Todd. I think this is Jermaine. I'm kind of following on this, so we're going to put this on hold, but I want to, the reason I want, I'm okay with that is. Chris, remind me, for the fiscal year 20 that we're currently in versus the fiscal year 21 that we're looking at, projected and doing the proposals. We had a 2% tax increase, correct, in the current budget?
That's correct. We did take a tax increase last year, that's correct.
Okay, so under what Ken is proposing right now, we're going to set that aside, not make the decision on the taxes right now or anything else. You have a continued resolution. Now, is that budget under the continued resolution, if we stay at the same budget level, spending levels? Chris, is that sustainable or does that create any hardship for us?
Chair Dunlap, trustee Banducci, we proposed a 5.5 million not to exceed for the continuing resolution. We've done a review of all of the expenses last fiscal year for actuals in July and August. And that allows us to take care of everything that has to take, has to happen within the months of July and August.
Thank you.
Any further discussion related to the motion?
Chair Dunlap?
Yes.
I apologize to add one thing to this, but the motion did not include the, the course fees?
Oh, I believe it did.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, trustee Howard.
Given that Chris just told us that he had anticipated with the continuing resolution a not to exceed amount of 5.5 million as an operating budget between now and August, apparently. Do I have that right, Chris?
Yes, sir, it'd be between now and September 1st.
All right, then I guess I, I would like to, again, amend my, my motion to include that, that the continuing resolution will provide 5.5 million not to exceed for the college to utilize until September 1st.
Trustee Wood, is that your second?
Yes, that's fine.
Any further discussion regarding the motion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? The motion carries. Thank you, trustee Howard. We have done tab one as well as tab two, which was the continuing resolution. And so next is the second reading of the board member conduct policy. And trustee Howard, you are up.
I, I hope all of you have been provided with a marked-up copy of the original. And it contains my, my attempt at making the, the changes suggested by everybody. And what I would like to do is table any further consideration of this for tonight. With giving everybody an opportunity to look at the changes that have been made so that we get kind of a final draft. If, if we, if we all agree on a final draft, given the changes that have been suggested, then we can put this on the agenda next time. If there are areas of disagreement, then the next time, again, it would be on the agenda. And we would have an opportunity to debate those differences of opinion on what ought to go in to that policy or whether the policy ought to proceed at all. But I, so I'm suggesting that this is an opportunity to, again, review the, the policy with the changes suggested by everybody.
Trustee Howard. Trustee Howard, are you suggesting or making a motion to that effect?
To table it?
Yes.
Yeah, I'd like to have a discussion on it, but that would be my ultimate resolution would be to table it.
Okay, is there a second? And then we'll have the discussion on that.
I'll second that.
Yes, been moved and seconded. Any comments related to the trustee conduct policy with regard to tabling it until our next meeting?
Chair Dunlap, this is trustee Banducci.
Yeah, trustee Banducci, go ahead.
Well, I guess one overarching question I have, and I, I asked this at the last meeting, appropriateness. And looking at how we develop, initiate and develop and refine policies and procedures. I still question whether or not this should be, or needs to be, maybe I may say it that way, has not gone through the other constituency groups. I gotta believe that there are other constituency groups as we normally have review, review process that all the different groups that are involved here. Get a chance to review and comment and, and I guess in their own world, approve or disapprove, or at least give their endorsement or not. We've kind of developed this in a, in a bit of a vacuum amongst the trustees. And I'm wondering, is it, is it not appropriate that the other constituency groups get a crack at this thing and get a look at it? In the same way that anything else initiated from somebody else, we, everybody else would get a crack at?
Yeah, go ahead, trustee Howard.
Actually, Todd, we don't have any form to review yet because we haven't arrived at a policy that we can agree on. And that's what we're doing. You know, when we finally agree on a policy, then we can decide whether it needs to go through that process or not. I think there are provisions in the procedures, quite frankly, or in the policy manual, that, that there are certain policies that are strictly within the domain of the trustees. But we can decide whether that, what that process is once we know what, what policy we're, we've agreed upon.
Yeah, the, the board operating policy is not subject to the governance policy. And if you look in the accreditation report, there's a chart that shows the process through which policy is developed. And there's policy specific to accreditation that is shown in that chart that is processed specifically to the, the board. However, consistent with what trustee Howard is saying, I think once we agree on a proposed policy and it comes before the open meeting, others are certainly able to comment on that. Any other further, or any further discussion related to trustee Howard's motion to table the policy for this evening?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, trustee Wood.
Well, I, I would just like to thank Ken for taking everyone's comments and incorporating it and getting it back to us so we can study it some more. I anticipate there will be some good discussion around it, but I appreciate all the hard work that you've done.
It's not over if you have more comments. So I, I would appreciate if you go through the draft that's existing, that exists. And if you have other comments, get them to me within the next couple of weeks so I can incorporate those sort of threads. So that everybody can review them in the context of the policy. What I found in receiving the comments from all of you was that there was some overlap in some of the suggestions. And some of them were the same, some of them were a little different. So I think it's easier for us to discuss something once we see, everybody sees what has been proposed. So additional comments are welcome, encouraged.
We, we'll go ahead and take a vote on the motion unless there is any further discussion. All in favor of the motion to table the board conduct policy for this evening signify by saying aye?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you, trustee Howard. Next, under new information, or excuse me, new business, we have the first reading and board action for the trustee meeting schedule for 2021.
So you have as tab three, the board trustees' meeting calendar for 2020, 2021. And this is the first reading for that schedule. It's included as an attachment. However, the board may choose to forego the second reading in June and approve the board trustees' meeting calendar for 2020, 2021 as presented.
Thank you, President McLennan. Does anybody believe we need a second reading in June for the proposed schedule? Then I would certainly entertain a motion to accept the proposed schedule.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to accept the proposed schedule for FY 2021.
Is there a second? Second. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. As an information item, we've got COVID-19 planning and response. And I think Dr. McLennan said that Christie Doyle and one other individual may be making that report.
Trustee Dunlap, I'll go ahead and just kick this off first. We actually have a few other folks that are going to be presenting as well. And the thought was that there's, obviously the world has shifted in the last three months. And we've learned a lot and we're, we're integrating that learning and how we're moving forward. But I thought it would be important for the board to hear a little bit about the college's experience with COVID-19. How we responded to COVID-19 in terms of impact on, on faculty, on student learning. On student impact overall and student services. I'd also like to provide an update. Chris Martin will give you an update on the CARES Act funding and how that is rolling out. And then a little bit about fall enrollment and, and kind of what's in the forecast there, although there's still, the one constant, all of this is uncertainty and there's, there's a lot of that. So we're trying to control the things that we can't control, planning for the contingencies that we know, the scenarios that may be in front of us. And, and of course, want to entertain any questions the board has along the way as we go through this. So to get us started will be Dr. Larry Briggs and Christie Doyle.
Chair Dunlap, members of the board, thanks to Dr. Burns for preparing this material and certainly to Dean Doyle for, for her assistance. To offer a summary of some of the challenges and how they were addressed. The transition of classes to an online environment went as well as could be expected under very difficult circumstances this spring. In a short timeline, over 700 individual sections of courses were transitioned. So we're talking everything from pharmacology to yoga, music lessons to geology lab. HVAC systems to police procedures were placed online. Certainly a major challenge associated with this were those classes and programs that could not be moved to an online environment. And those courses needed to be suspended. So a lot of additional effort has gone into making that possible now that some of the restrictions have been relaxed. So a lot of additional effort has gone into making that possible now that some of the restrictions have been relaxed. And as of last Monday, May 18th, students returned to campus in lab settings for Meyer Health Science. Parker Technical Education, Workforce Training and Headland. And by the end of this week, so Friday, May 29th. Approximately 40% of the courses in Dean Doyle's units will be completed. And it's anticipated that the majority of the remaining labs and or clinicals will be completed. Between the middle and the end of June. A few of the nursing or health-related programs will be completed at the end of August due to restrictions on clinical sites and arrangements there. Workforce training has completed 50% of the courses that needed to be suspended due to COVID-19. These, of course, are the classes that could only be done in person. In addition, numerous courses that were scheduled to start in April and June were scheduled or canceled. And some of those classes are starting in the month of June. So certainly there was an impact on faculty and and we just can't emphasize enough what an incredible job they did. Moving courses to an online environment when many of them were not designed and to do so in the middle of the term was particularly challenging. Leaders certainly expressed in many settings and Christie and I wholeheartedly agree that the approach, the attitude, the commitment of faculty. Was really remarkable and we just want to applaud what they did in that very short timeframe. Of course, we have lots of help when we made this transition. E-learning, the Cardinal Learning Commons, Student Support Services, Enrollment Services. All helped ensure that students received vital support in this really challenging period of transition. And just lent a really significant hand as we navigated this. As to the impact on student learning, of course, we wish that there was no negative impact, but. That's the reality for for some students, the change from. A face-to-face in-person experience to an online experience. Meant that there were some students who were lost despite lots of effort. I talked, for instance, to Chris Pellchat about all the work that he did. And some students just couldn't stay connected in an online environment and the other disruptions that were occurring in their lives. So we will look closely at what we find on the number of students that did not persist during the term. Compared to a more normal term and apply those lessons to fall. I'd also like to mention that we did provide provisions for students to withdraw. I think Chris will probably speak to this in a bit. And also for grading options that helped mitigate some of the negative impacts of the transitions on students. So lessons learned or lessons relearned. Certainly, the spring reinforced how vital it is to have that human connection for students to be able to. Be in a face-to-face environment with their faculty, with their fellow students. That level of connection is just a vital a vital link that that was broken in the spring. And so we are looking to do everything that we can, recognizing that we have to plan for a new environment. With that with that knowledge in mind. And certainly without the really impressive work of IT, Ken Wardinsky, his team. We know we just could not have navigated all of this. They are really a most impressive group. They were so responsive to faculty needs, to staff needs and to student needs. And they deserve tremendous kudos for everything that they did.
Thank you, Dr. Briggs. Next, we'll hear from Dr. Stanley. I think. I want to see if that's come up on your screen. Are you able to see a slideshow there? Yep. Great, thank you. Thank you, Chairman Dunlap, trustees, President McLennan, colleagues and friends. Thank you for this opportunity to present on impacts and strategies of COVID-19, particularly as it relates to services and particularly student services. Much of what I have to say, Dr. Briggs has covered as well, and I would share his sentiments on behalf of faculty. Our pride in the work that the faculty has done is is matched with my pride in the work that all of our student services and. Other service providers have done as well. I want to share with you just nothing, nothing too fancy about this, but kind of some observations of. Some of the challenges and successes that we observed, and this isn't all inclusive, but I want to. Share some of these in enrollment services, those folks in Cardinal Central and and Trio and advising and admissions and. Financial aid, all of those areas transitioned very rapidly. I was just so pleased about how quickly and in an urgent situation, they were able to to move to their homes, move to a different. Setting, adapt their processes, as Dr. Briggs said, that the utilization of technology and the support provided by. IT was incredible and our users were so skilled at doing that through several Zoom events. We kept mentioning to to current and prospective students about, we're still here, just not physically present, but call us on the office phone. Email us, check our website and we'll have updated information and provide as good a service to you as we can through this. And our enrollment services team has been remarkable in that regard. A number of them are on at the meeting tonight and I thank them and all their colleagues for the work that they've done. You heard from Kai tonight and of course you worked with Paul all year. The student involvement and that that Doty and others lead were really remarkable about staying by the ASNIC met every week during this period of time virtually as well. They were the ones that represented paying paying student employees to to to. Continue with their support. They were the ones who were highly involved in the development of commencement. They still followed through with student body elections and the development of a new constitution during these times, so they stayed fully engaged. Our children's center, I was was so proud of the work that they did because even though they couldn't have the children on site. They stayed connected with all the families and children and did that virtually like you've heard the school systems. Where they connected up with those children they care for and their families and continued to provide provide support through the balance of the semester. In athletics, as you all know, we had to cancel our spring sports season, but we charged our coaches with continuing. To work with their teams, they could do individual training, of course, couldn't gather in groups. But particularly charged them with focusing on the student athlete success in the classrooms. So they stayed highly engaged with them. They were also working on recruitment of student athletes and I'm pleased to tell you that most of those teams have been filled. For next season, this next year, even though they couldn't travel on the road, they couldn't go to recruiting events, they had to do that virtually. And the Student Wellness and Recreation Center continued to provide support to our students and our employees. By having individualized training that was connected to the website that folks could follow on. And I'm proud to announce that there'll be reopening next Monday, June 1st with all the protective measures in place. And welcoming students and employees back to their site. In conference and events, they did a lot of work on procedures. They also, before we left. They had set up models for social distancing as we moved back to classrooms or conferencing venues. They have plans in place that will allow the six-foot physical distancing and meet all of those provisions. In disability support services, they continue to provide the support that was necessary, as Dr. Briggs talked about, to support student success in the classroom. Sign language was remarkable, what they did to develop technology so that our signer could be a part of that class and visually be available. To to the the students who needed that. In student counseling, they continued to provide mental health was certainly a great concern for us. And they continued to provide individual mental health counseling and did developed virtual group sessions as well. In housing and dining services, you know, we cleared the residence hall, allowed students to go home. We did that partly to get students in safe places where they could continue their studies. But also to make our housing available to the emergency responders in Kootenay County so that they had a place. To isolate if that was needed and working with the county, we were pleased to do that. We provided refunds to all of those students for their housing and and dining services that they didn't get to participate in. Our bookstore operated virtually and would send books to students or continuing to do that. Sent mailing labels so they could send back used books or borrow books back to the bookstore and didn't require a physical present. Security and many others continued to provide service, security and maintenance and. IT and lots of other folks continued a presence throughout this on our campus. I want to note our security team was instrumental in working with the community coming to our campus. In providing lots of times we had to have them be a drop-off place for students to pick things up and security served us so well there. Student impacts, I just want to mention briefly. Employment was one of those, as you would know, we employ a number of our students, we're a source of income for them. And I was so pleased that the institution support and the board support for continuing that employment through the balance of the school year and so. Whether it was federal work study that 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 the US Department of Ed let us pay out or whether it was athletic work study. Or any other part-time student employment, those students got paid. That was a request made by ASNIC that we honor. With extracurricular activity that was difficult for our students, Dr. Briggs talked about that human connection that we all miss and certainly it happens. In that extra and co-curricular side so often, and so while ASNIC attempted to stay engaged and clubs engaged. You know, virtually, we missed that face-to-face interaction. The financial impact for students was certainly dramatic and I know Chris Martin will report on that further. But ASNIC, I think you know, gave $10,000 to support emergency assistance for students. We utilized some leftover grant money from the Albertson Foundation, about $80,000 to fund more emergency use. To date, we've had 151 requests for from that ASNIC and Albertson Foundation Emergency Fund. Awarded $36,732. Most recently, we've had access to CARES emergency funds. Chris will report on some other money that's been given out, but we had an emergency fund process. Where we were able to provide to this point $67,060. We've had 153 applications. For that money that's restricted because it's provided by the US Department of Ed, so. Over 300 applications that we have processed and provided support for students financially. Communication continues to be a challenge, whether this in in this environment or any other, but we it has been particularly difficult, I believe. For between the various modes of communication to connect with each other, students to each other, students to employees, whether it's phone or email or. We've done a number of live Zoom events, but that has been a challenge. Commencement, I hope a number of you got to participate or see commencement or still can go out and do that. So proud of our team that put that together. That was incredibly important to students and they gave voice to that about they wanted to maintain that. One of the requests that came in late was it was really important for some students to have regalia. They'd looked forward that to that for a number of years and so through student activities. We developed the process where they could purchase their own regalia and we would reimburse them to a maximum amount for that. We had a number of applications and provided that regalia to students. We sent some incredibly. Some great boxes with graduation materials, commencement materials to our students and then put together that virtual ceremony last last week. And finally, just that that whole engagement of students to the institution. Our student body, the student who we are at North Idaho College and the students that we serve value engagement and so that's certainly been. A challenge for us. Real quickly, some of the enrollment impacts and our solutions, our NIC Connect program where we work with the high schools. We maintained that. We did it virtually. We connected up with principals and counselors. And virtually with students at each one of the schools in Region One. We've conducted a huge number of Zoom events for various programs, various entities had. Members of the Instructional Division, Student Services Division Administration hosting events where prospective or current students could join us and find out more. As I said, we talked, we stayed connected with high school counselors. The withdrawal credit that that Chris Martin will talk a little bit more about. Provided an opportunity to retain students so that if they if it just didn't work for them through this crisis. We invited them back to join us next semester and they could receive credit for the money that they had spent this semester. I think we're the only institution in the state that did that and it was very generous. We're working on a program now. To offer that forward to some students who were impacted even prior to our April 7th enactment date. Our foundation provides incredible support through scholarships. That has certainly buoyed us and it's part of our. Our initiative moving forward to let them know that we have this kind of support for you to come to school at NIC next year. Communications and marketing have been incredible partners in connecting up with various audiences. Laura may have a chance to speak to that with targeted messaging and multiple you multiple uses of ways to connect our students. Through our enrollment services, we maintain constant contact through text, through email, through phone calls. Cardinal Central is doing live Zooms every day so somebody can virtually just call up and talk to one of our. One of our Cardinal Central staff members there. There has just been a continuing emphasis on let's main contact. With our students in the way that we can and our Strategic Enrollment Management. Committee has continued to look at opportunities to adapt to what the needs of our future will be. And lastly, and a few of these mirror what Dr. Briggs had have talked about, lessons learned. We can do so much more with technology than we ever understood before and we've utilized it well and there's more to learn. Thanks again to to IT and their work, but also thanks to so many of our employees who are incredibly talented or courageous about just jumping in and using it. So that's been a lesson learned that we have a lot more in our toolkit than than we knew. Methods of communication that we need to continue to emphasize that that has to be multiple methods, no matter how many times we call or email or text. There has to be be more and it has to be well coordinated. The value of engagement, again, Dr. Briggs mentioned that I don't think we can overemphasize. In this environment, what we've learned about the value of face-to-face connectedness between people. The flexibility that we have to have, we're somewhat traditional in higher education and we have learned. In painful ways about the need to be flexible in our processes. And 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 how we work with students. And and lastly, a lesson learned is the adaptability of our personnel and processes. Our our faculty and staff, our employees have been fabulous. Our students have stayed with us. You know, as many as could as they navigated this and we've adapted a lot of our processes to try to accommodate that. So those are some some highlights of lessons learned, so thank you. I'd be glad to, I would be glad to address any questions, but thrilled to share this on behalf of our employees who are continuing to serve our students. Thank you. Thank you, Grayden. Let's go ahead and Brandon, do you have a trustee Murray, did you have a question? Look like you had your hand up, okay. Chris, you want to talk about CARES Act and gears and?
Absolutely. So that we did receive funding from the federal government in the form of the CARES Act. The college received a little bit more than $2.1 million in direct aid. Half of that has to be spent directly on student support, so a little bit more than $1 million. We've chosen a path where we gave students grants directly, as well as Grayden mentioned. The remaining amount is going towards funding emergency needs that may persist. So so far, 1,600 students have received $400 in direct grants and that went directly to them. It didn't hit their accounts. It went directly to those students to help offset expenses that they may have faced due to COVID-19 such as internet access, additional technology needs. Grayden, as he mentioned, will be managing the rest of that through the Office of Vice President for Student Services and we're excited to continue to help students throughout the summer and into the fall. The other remainder of that money is allocated for institutional use, so again, a little bit more than $1 million has been allocated to institutional use. It won't surprise you. Some of that money was spent on IT expenses. You've heard. Our our IT department has been phenomenal in supporting students as well as faculty and staff as they transitioned. And then custodial and miscellaneous maintenance expenses. So before the end of the, the closure, we are, we're already up, increasing our upkeep and our custodial needs dramatically. So we had some expenses there. And as we are coming back online, putting Plexiglas sneeze guards in all of the common areas where there's public facing desks, those type of expenses. Grayden also mentioned, we did provide board refunds and housing refunds to our students who were in the residence hall. So as they left, we refunded the unused portion of their housing and the unused portion of their meals and the W to COVID. So that was a unique process the college engaged in, allowing students the chance to try the remote environment, try the virtual classes, give it a try. See if it was going to work and if for some reason it would not work for their specific life circumstance. We allowed them to move that tuition fee onto an upcoming semester at NIC and essentially gave them a credit for those classes that they had already begun and weren't able to finish. Grayden mentioned, I think we're the only institution in the state that's done that. Very proud that our institution was able to, to do that for students, have had some great feedback there. There was also the expansion of the semester. There was some expense to expand in the semester. And so that also has gone towards this expense as well as more IT expenses, workforce training, payouts for students who were on work study. So you'll notice that's where we are with that spending at the moment. Additionally, the college received a separate CARES allocation for strengthening institution programs because of the demographics of NIC. We have $106,000 coming in SIP. So we'll be, be looking to put that to good use. Instruction has done a phenomenal job of developing a summer bridge program for our local high school students as they bridge into NIC. And so we're looking forward to that program launching. Additionally, the governor received money for education as a block grant for the state. And the college has written a proposal that's a little bit under $500,000 that would essentially dramatically support a move to enhancing IT for virtual use going forward as well as again, support for instruction, summer bridge program. And so that's how the CARES Act dollars have been allocated thus far.
Thank you, Chris. As we, so as from what you've heard, as we look forward to the fall, of course, there's still a lot of uncertainty out there. And I'm going to turn it back over to, we, we do have a, an operations and logistics team that is working to. I shared with the college and with the board, the NIC rebounds stages that sought to take the governor's guidance and overlay that to North Idaho College and how we might move into gradually reopening college buildings and facilities and services. On, on Friday, another version of that, an enhanced version of that will be going out to the college to answer some questions that are still out there. What, what does it mean now as we go into stage three? If in fact, we go into stage three on Monday, we'll hear about that tomorrow. And what does stage four look like for the colleges? We begin to move through the rest of the month of June, if we stay on that timeframe. But again, the, you know, it's still total uncertainty about how we're going to launch in the fall. And so I just wanted to share briefly some early, some thinking and planning around that. And Larry, I'm going to turn it back over to you.
Just, just to check, Dr. McLeinen, did, did you want Karen to, to speak to any, any topics prior to, to my diving back in on instruction?
No, no, you're, you're okay to go, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Just trying, trying to follow the script that, that I had. So regarding fall, the instructional leadership team consists of the deans and all the direct reports responsible for courses and programs at the institution. And so together with staff and all of those areas, there's been a tremendous amount of work to looking at fall with the key element of how do we adapt as may be necessary to changing conditions? So for fall, we have offered a typical diversity of classes in various modes. So face to face, hybrid, so that's a combination of face to face and online and fully online classes. And we've put in a way to think about how we would make transitions from those face to face classes in particular. If we were in a situation that required social distancing or perhaps a return to where we were in March, where we could not have any kind of in-person contact on class, in, in classes. So of course, in higher ed, we like to add additional terminology to how we talk about these things. So high flex is kind of the new coin of the realm around this adjustment for schedule. And basically what that idea is, is to further split how many students would be in a class. So that rather than meeting as they might have in a normal schedule twice a week. They would only come in once a week and have the rest of their instruction provided online. That would permit some level of social distancing. There's quite a bit of work that's still underway around that and discussions certainly continue for how that could be facilitated. And discussions with space utilization are absolutely critical in that, in that planning. We have some powerful tools with Zoom. I think that Ken cited in a meeting recently, how we have just used thousands and thousands of hours of Zoom. So we've become a bit more adept at using that and that would certainly be a tool as we need to look at fall and possible transition. We also have an impressive capacity through our learning management system called Canvas that allows for video and face to face interactions with students. So faculty are working with e-learning and other areas on campus to really strengthen their ability to use those tools as we look at delivery during, during the fall. An additional alternative to fall delivery includes the option of some condensed courses. So by that, we mean rather than a course that spans the full semester. A course that would be concentrated and offered in a six week schedule. So there are some select areas on campus that have already done that and are looking to continue that in the, in the fall. And we also know that there is a possibility, as we experienced in the spring, where some of the in-person delivery simply cannot occur. Should we have a reversion to what occurred in March? And in that instance, we would also suspend instruction and do our best to work with students to keep them whole at a time when we can bring them back together. It's certainly our goal to communicate the nature of these changes potentially to students. So that they can have that information as they are making decisions about fall enrollment. We do not have all of those in place at this time. It is our intent to provide that information as soon as we have that well in hand. And, and again, would coordinate closely with our colleagues in student services and advising to make sure that students were aware that these are potential impacts that we are planning for. So that they are aware of that in a fashion that we just couldn't do, you know, in, in the spring term. But would prepare people as best we can for, for the fall. And finally, as was, as was mentioned, another piece of preparing for fall and helping students with the transition is a summer bridge. We know that so many high school students, for instance, have had their learning interrupted. And they may not be as well prepared as they otherwise would be coming into the fall. And so look to offer a way to support some of those students and help ensure their readiness for the fall semester at NIC.
Dr. Briggs, I believe trustee Banducci has a question for you.
Of course.
Trustee Banducci? All right. I guess he's temporarily off the air. Any other questions or comments for Dr. Briggs?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, trustee Wood.
Thank you. Well, they've all said a lot and it's, it's been a really thorough report. I do appreciate that. I want to go back to Dr. Briggs' first comments when he was first up. And Dr. Briggs, you talked about that at some point, we would know the number of students that were able to adapt through this learning style, not being on campus, having to adapt to the virtual learning. Do we have any of those numbers yet? You said there's a lot of lessons to be learned. Do we have those numbers yet of how many were able to complete their courses and how many that just couldn't do it?
I, I don't have immediately with me how many students completed. Grades, of course, were due on Tuesday. I can certainly get that information. But I, I think one of the points that I wanted to be sure and make, and I think this is exactly your question, is what did we see in the number of students who withdrew this spring compared to prior springs? And how we might be able to understand something of the negative impact of the transition because of, of COVID-19? We know of a number, a number of anecdotal indicators around this. But in terms of hard data, I don't have that immediately available. That is certainly something that we will collect and, and look at.
I appreciate that. Then Mr. Chair, if I could ask Chris a question?
You bet.
Thank you, Chris. Great report on all of the different, where the CARES Act money was spent or is being spent. I don't know if you have any information coming forward or maybe the president does. Is, I understand now that any future dollars, the state has managed to wrangle that those will be managed by the state and delivered to the college. Anything you're hearing about just dollars in general to plug the holes? Not so much for the specific line items that you've been working on, which were all valid. But what about money just coming back to deal with the losses that the college has overall?
Chair Dunlap, trustee Wood, at this time, all the, all the funding that we have at this moment is CARES related or COVID related. There's nothing else that we're anticipating that will just be blanket funding that I'm aware of. Dr. McLeinen, do you, do you want to address that?
No, I think it's, you know, if you look at the 5% cut we're receiving from the state, that's makes a total of a 7% cut for the, for next fiscal year. As Chris mentioned in his budget comments, that's what we're hearing, that's the, that's the starting point. We won't know, I think what we're, what I'm concerned about now is the, the total amount of care money that came to the state. That's, that's gone out to, you know, small businesses, that's gone out to government, you know, entities and whatnot. What's the impact of that going to be to, to make the whole, to keep the hole from getting bigger? So that we won't have additional cuts. But I don't, I don't foresee anything, I think really the only thing that we can, one of the things that we can control now in, in addition to the lessons learned from how we rapidly went into COVID-19 and the, and the extraordinary work that's being done, both at the, at the support level, at the IT, at the distance learning level. And through the remarkable efforts of our staff and faculty to do some of the best hands-on, virtual, if those two things can go together, work I've ever seen happen. The only thing that we control beyond that really is enrollment, to the extent that we can control that. And that's where that 9%, you know, anticipated, which, you know, put quotation marks around anticipated because we really don't know what fall enrollment is going to do. But the, what, what did you call it, the high, high flex, Larry? The approach that we're trying to take for the fall in, in meeting programs and services, meeting student need for programs and services where they are going to be able to access them and be comfortable with them, whether it's in a virtual environment, a hybrid environment or an online environment. Or on the ground environment. We're doing everything that we can do to give students a sense of confidence that if they begin here in the fall. We're going to find a way for as many of them as we possibly can through the way we're offering instruction and support to get them to the end of the semester. You know, and, and, and doing everything we can to structure support around that to make that actually happen. So as far as budget goes, I don't anticipate any other. There's, there is something out there in the higher education community looking for. There, there's estimated that as, as high as 20% of the institutions nationally, higher education institutions nationally, maybe go under. Some are already severely distressed prior to COVID. You know, national enrollment issues, especially with the small private liberal arts colleges. And, you know, there's some pretty significant thought out there about what's going to happen on, at large with higher education. And so there's a, some lobbying now underway to try to have Congress understand that this is a, this is a national a risk to the nation if we let too much of that infrastructure disappear. So there may be something that comes through from that, but I don't really see anything on the immediate horizon.
Mr. Chair.
trustee Howard, you had a question?
Not a question really. Well, maybe it's a question. There are more presenters? I thought there were going to be some other issues that were going to be addressed. Yes. I've got some questions I'd like to ask, but I'd like to hear all the presentations.
So the. Can you hear me? This is Todd. Sorry.
We can hear you.
Okay, sorry, somehow I got muted. I have one more question too, but I don't know that I hear more presenters. Mine goes back to, to Larry Briggs back from his original part of this whole presentation. It's kind of a quick question, it dovetails a little bit on Christie's. Larry, we were giving the students an alternative grading method, if you will. Do we know how many chose to opt out of the traditional A, B, C, D, F to the, what was basically a satisfactory, unsatisfactory, kind of a pass fail? Do you have any idea how many students decided to take advantage of that option?
But thank you for that, for that question. The answer is no, we don't yet. In part because we are giving students this Friday to make that determination. So that students received their grade for GPA and then could make a final determination this Friday as to whether or not they wanted to take advantage of the S or the U option. So after that, next week, we'll be able to give you that information. So thank you for that question.
And thank you.
Trustee Howard, Chair Dunlap, to the question of other presentations, we've heard from kind of how we're moving into the fall, but I just wanted to provide the board with a little bit of information about how we're, some of the efforts that are underway to actually. In terms of you heard a little bit of the outreach from Dr. Stanley, I think he's got a little bit more on enrollment. And then Laura Rumppler is going to share with you a little bit around the marketing and communication side of this as well. So Grayden and Laura. Laura, would you like to go first and I'll fill in any gaps?
I would love to, Mr. Stanley. How is everyone this evening? Can you hear me okay? I'm having a little bit of challenges with some audio, but.
We got you.
You got me. Fantastic. And I apologize if I cough a little, my asthma has just bothered me just a tiny bit this evening. So wanted to share with you some overview and highlights with regards to what we have been rocking and rolling on. With regards to not only enrollment and recruitment of potential new students to North Idaho College, but also parallel the work that we do with regards to the retention of our existing students and working to keep those students that we have on a path to success and having them feel valued and connected at North Idaho College. So I'm going to quickly share my screen for just a couple of slides. So oops, hold on one second. I want to share screen. So just to double check, can you see a wonderful current student we have named Abby? And the screen that says, education creates opportunity? Fantastic. So what we did was as we were rolling through this spring and already starting to plan our messaging and the work that we were doing for the fall, of course, then COVID-19 hit. And so we quickly adapted and regrouped. And I think thematically, that's what you've been hearing from all different parts of our college with regards to how we quickly shifted and adapted. And what we wanted to do was we wanted to come up with some messaging. And adapted. And what we wanted to do was we wanted to come up with some messaging specifically around what was most important. And the value to our current students and our community members about education. And so we came up with the overarching theme of education creates opportunity. And what we've been doing is we've been storytelling through the spring and through the summer with regards to what does opportunity look like? For all different kinds of students at North Idaho College. And then the three sub-messengers and the key messages that we wanted to make certain that we got across and they, we are getting across to students. Is it's really important for folks, no matter what their circumstances right now, that to remind people. Family members as well as prospective students and current students that we are close to home. And that we have career-ready certificates and degrees and have quality programs right here at North Idaho College. So no matter what is happening across the world and different circumstances and changes. Students have opportunities, valuable opportunities right here. And then instead of messaging out with regards to oftentimes, community colleges get boxed into a box of they're affordable. Or they're less than with regards to either price or value. We wanted to take the opportunity to let people know that we have over a million dollars in scholarships from our amazing foundation available to our students. To try and help them get past that impediment or the thought process of could they afford to go to college? So what we've done is, is then one of the things that's been really important to me since I came in North Idaho College is we want to be authentic and transparent and real. And so we have gone, taken the last couple of years to make a huge shift, going away from stock photography. And really bringing the authentic self of North Idaho College and our students who are real students are to the forefront of the work that we do. So in this campaign, and we're talking, we call it a fall enrollment campaign, but it is really our campaign. We've already been hitting some great numbers with regards to our digital advertising that have helped boost our numbers with summer enrollment. And now we're turning to the fall where again, it says, education creates opportunity. This is just an example of a print ad and a digital ad that we've been using in different places. That again, shows a student, this is Cody. He's one of, in our surgical technology program. We actually just got finished videoing him, filming him. We've done a couple of student stories too, to bring the faces. And the stories of our students to life off of the print and the digital space into their storytelling. So you'll see some videos being released here on social media and other places in the next couple of weeks. And then what we wanted to do again is share that those quality programs and those career pathways. Start blending right into the work that we've been doing for the last couple of years at North Idaho College. With regards to the six interest areas and around the guided pathways concept we have here at North Idaho College. And then back to the messaging that when we work on Spotify ads, radio ads, when we do other swipe through. Or swipe up, sorry, on Snapchat and other platforms. That we're getting these deeper sub-messengers too, with regards to again, close to home, career-ready programs and over a million dollars in scholarships. So we've been doing work to, to get students targeted to our website, to the opportunity page. So that they can go and learn the steps to apply. They can also take the first step to talking to, with someone at North Idaho College. Grayden's done a fabulous example. He shared a couple of examples already of how we've worked just. And side by side lockstep with regards to our enrollment services team. With regards to making certain that this handoff that we're doing when we're recruiting students or we're getting students interested. That then they're connecting with a real person. And they're starting to already have that sense of belonging, connection, relationship to North Idaho College. We have in this unique time, really focused the majority of any of our advertising buys or our paid media around digital. And the reason why we've gone digital, of course, is we like to reach people where they're at. And right now, when people have been stuck at home, they've been stuck at home watching Hulu. They've been streaming, they've been using their cell phone. And so we have developed very targeted strategic campaigns, digital address where we can geofence. Actual addresses and homes and do some A, B testing as well with regards to the different messages that are working for, let's say. A traditional high school student that's in the home or potentially tapping into that parent or grandparent that's in the home as well. And hitting them in all the different devices with these different types of ads. Here's another one, for example, this is an alum of North Idaho College. You might recognize him. His name is Gabe. And he was actually, yes, I see a couple of smiles and a couple of nods. He was actually a couple of years ago, the construction foreman with regards to the building of our wellness. Student Recreation and Wellness Center here at North Idaho College. So Gabe. He graduated with his construction management degree and is now having a very successful career with Jino Construction. We also though, are not forgetting other great opportunities that we have in this unique time. So we put a greater emphasis on direct mail. We're in the process of finishing up a couple of targeted direct mail postcards that are going to over 2,000 high school students. Seniors in North Idaho with regards to having a direct connection into their home for them and their parents. For them again, to look at and think of the different options that they have. We've done a lot of work across the nation with our peers and have tapped into some experts and looked at some focus groups. And just getting a sense of decision-making behaviors of not only high school graduates, non-traditionals. And what we also is a new demographic for us in these unique times called. The unanticipated or the forced transfer. So these are potentially students that already have a semester or two or a year under their belt. They may have gone to University of Idaho last year down in Moscow, or they might've gone to Boise State. And now they're frozen right now, trying to make a decision on are they going to go back or are they going to stay home? Are they going to take, are they going to take a gap year or are they going to take a time to pause? And so we've been doing some various targeted messaging to them and really trying to capture them. And again, get them to see North Idaho College as an opportunity. We haven't forgotten print advertising. We try and leverage our dollars as best we can. And every single time we can do matching grants and as you, you might have seen in the newspaper. A couple of weeks ago that the Coeur d'Alene Press was offering advertising opportunities. We have applied for and received as many different matching grants ads that we can. So we try and leverage our dollars to the best of our ability. We've been doing a lot of different video promotion. And again, like I said, Snapchat, Instagram. We can drill down so specifically to a target market. It's, it's just amazing and unreal. We've been working with faculty members on specific programs and individual classes. They want to help boost. Enrollment and we've been seeing some really great returns in our health professions, our social behavioral sciences, English and the humanities division. Computer applications, office and technology. One of the other cool things we've done and Grayden alluded it to it as well, is we've had all of these opportunities with Zoom. To have these connection points and these interactions and Q and A sessions for prospective students and current students. So I just put up this slide to show you an example of some of the different opportunities we pay fun promoting on social media. One of the other things that the team came up with, which was just so awesome this spring. That we're continuing to roll out this summer is connecting students with real faces and real people. And starting to make those connections about advisors. So we've done a whole campaign around highlighting, and this one is, for example, is Casey Wilhelm. He's our business administration management advisor. He's also a professor. Many of you know him. And so we've been able to highlight out on social media and make those connections for current students as well as prospective students. The real faces of North Idaho College. So they don't feel like they're just a number somewhere. They're actually going to be treated like a human being and they're going to be valued here. Grayden stole my thunder a little bit when he showed the box. That we sent out to all our graduates and advertising and marketing and communication and connections is not just about paid advertising. It's about those sense of pride points. And you would be amazed how many students then reposted. Pictures of themselves with their boxes and family members. And we got so much organic reach and energy and attraction. Just about all the work we did and the heavy lift we did around commencement. And I really feel like those students who see that what North Idaho College is doing in action with the community and for the community. Again, when they're making those decisions and they're uncertain, we're hoping that they're going to take a second look at North Idaho College. We have still been rocking and rolling too, with regards to all of the marketing and advertising. We've been doing this spring and again, this summer for our Metallica grant. You know, we got the second wave of that as well. So that's been paralleling nicely with the other work that we've been doing. And we are about to launch. New student orientation and the communications and marketing team again, has been working side by side with regards to. Grayden's folks and everyone over in student services about how we are again, are making those connections virtually from afar with students. So it's not just about paid advertising. It's really about how we are making those connections and those reaches. And for people to feel confident enough to make, take the next step, to want to start building that relationship with North Idaho College. And one final thing I wanted to share, so I will jump off the screen, share. Is that oftentimes, hopefully some of you still subscribe to the Coeur d'Alene Press or get it the old physical way on your driveway. But we also do a lot of earned media and we work very hard and very strategically with regards to the stories. That we create, that we provide to the Coeur d'Alene Press. And so in last Sunday's paper, we had some ads throughout the newspaper. But we also had a great story about a former student named Chris Howard. Who got his degree in education, but he's actually now a telecom lineman. And it talked though, about his skills that he learned at North Idaho College and his education program. About how, how he could mentor and teach people and really walk through the logical steps of getting teams together. And it has really served him well in the career now he, he has shifted to. So that's always fun to see our students come to life in the stories that we tell. And the final thing I'm going to do is I'm going to share with you a video. That just gives you a sense of the heart and soul of our, some of our students. We started this off as a feel-good video. Mostly for some of our current students to help keep our current students on the path to success with the you got this. And we've been now using it as part of our marketing campaign for the fall and it's getting some awesome traction on social media. So I'm going to leave you with this video and it's only in 46 seconds. So this should just give you a feel-good moment. Let me share my screen and let me see if this works. So hopefully, can you see a dark screen right now?
Not yet.
Not yet. Okay. Hold on, let me try it one more time. If not, I will be more than happy to send you the link. It worked earlier today. But of course, maybe it doesn't now.
Oh, there you go.
Okay, but now, hold on. Okay, now you're going to see a really crazy messy screen. And now you are going to see, oh, maybe I lost it. So I apologize. I was so excited to show you this video. Maybe if I can get it figured out here in a second or two when Grayden's presenting. I will do that. But Grayden, do you want to share anything more?
Sure. Thank you, Laura. Thanks for all that information and to Lauren, her staff who have done an incredible job. Promoting the college, both for prospective and continuing students. And we've had a partnership that we've spent a lot of time together with our staffs and, and really appreciate the good work with them and working with instruction to promote the college. Couple of things I just want to add, we've talked about the Zoom meeting a couple of times. I wanted to give you a, a further example. We were doing those almost every Friday. We started out talking about the grading options, that S and U and the withdraw options to tell current students. We went on to have one on fall semester, one on summer semester to answer questions on those. Dean Doyle and others from her department did one on nursing and health sciences. That was an evening program that went extremely well and had a big turnout for that. We recently did one for dual credit and, and workforce that we had a great turnout on that. And it involves the staff from all those various departments that jump on Zoom and make presentations and answer questions. We have one coming up on financial aid. We've done one on athletics. We have, I know that Dr. Born pulls on the event tonight and she's represented us through the Office of the State Board of Education. They've had statewide events where institutions are talking about what's happening at our school and promoting statewide. And Dr. Born pulls done that for us. We also have had events for non-traditional students, those students, not the, the high school ones. But those who are looking at coming back into college at Sarah Schmelzer and others have done that. In addition, and it's not nearly as fancy, but it's the, it's the important work that has to get done. Our Cardinal Central Staff and Enrollment Services folks have called everybody at the various stages. So we have students who have applied, but not yet taken placement tests. We call, text or email them. We have students who have been through those couple of steps, but haven't yet gone through advising. And we call and we email and we text all of them. So at every step along the way, you have bottlenecks where students sit and haven't made a decision about where to go. Or don't know what to do next. And our staff has called, have called. And when I say call, this isn't hundreds. This is thousands of students that were calling and texting and emailing continually to, to help them take the, the next step. The, the withdrawals that we've talked about, Chris Martin was talking about offering the, the credit for withdrawals. That occurred for those students that, that withdrew between April 7th and April 17th. We actually started responding to this COVID crisis March 13th. And so we've looked back now and we had a number of students who withdrew between March 13th and April 6th. That we now have our, our enrollment services staff reaching out to them and saying, you know what? We're going to offer you credit if you want to come back next year too. You withdrew in this time. And we're utilizing some of those Albertson Foundation funds that were left over. To encourage them to come back and join us next fall and spring and receive credit if they had the drop because of this crisis as well. And then, then lastly, and I know I said it before, but it's so critical. One of the greatest barriers for our students, you know, is financial. So our financial aid office is doing individual Zooms with all students who need supporting, completing that process. We have some events coming up where we're doing group financial assistance presentations. We have been awarding scholarships out to students already for the last month or so now. And we've been invited to participate at the high schools. We would go present scholarships at the high schools. We can't do that this year, but we've been invited to do that virtually. So we'll be going online and making presentations to students at high schools. On behalf of the NIC Foundation and the awards that they make. So we're trying to reduce all the barriers, help them get through all the steps. Provide the money and support for students to come here. So proud to be a part of that with Lauren, her staff, our enrollment services staff and the team at NIC. Thank, thank you, Grayden. And I know this has been a lot of information, but I really thought it was important for the board to. Really get a kind of a comprehensive picture, picture from where, where we've been. And how we're thinking about going forward. And, and one of the themes, I, I don't know, I know what I thought. But whatever people thought about remote working. What it would be like and what we've actually experienced, I think you can tell just by the reports that you've received and the, and the testimonials of. The effort that staff and faculty have put in and that, that this has been some of the fullest work this, that, that we've done. And people are working really hard. They're working long hours. But we, we, we know the work that we're doing is going to have an impact. So I guess we'll just open it for any comments or questions, Laura.
Well, I didn't, well, not a question, but I just have two more quick things to share and then I do think I have the video ready to go. What Grayden said is too, just to dovetail on it, shared quite a bit of what we're doing with regards to that outreach and messaging. To all those prospective students and those different unique audiences. What we're also doing too, is we have just strengthened the robustness of how we're reaching out to our current students. Who have yet to register again. So they have the ability and the capability and everything's ready to go for them for the fall. They just haven't, for whatever reason, made that decision or they're still in that pause mode. And so we have been doing again, very focused geo-fencing targeted messages to them and just started that campaign. And what was really awesome about that is normally industry standard is for a click-through rate of someone actually watching. Let's say you're watching Hulu and then suddenly a reminder ad comes up. A reminder message from North Idaho College about registering or getting ready to register, or you might see something on Snapchat. That the average in the industry rate is about 2.5%. We are gaining about 38% right now with regards to them paying attention to our messages and then taking an action step. And that campaign is still underway, but we're really happy with the progress and tweaking the messages that are resonating with our students right now. So I'm going to share my screen now and I'm going to show you. One of the many videos we've been doing. You see blank screen now, all black? Okay, here we go. Here's a couple of our students that should make you pretty proud.
Here at North Idaho College, we are family.
And this is a time we need to encourage each other.
Education creates opportunity.
So continue to put your education first.
Never lose sight of how important your goals are.
Because your dreams are worth pursuing.
You got this.
Keep working towards your program, certificate or degree.
Your fellow students.
Faculty, advisors.
And college staff are all here to support you along your journey.
Never hesitate to ask for help.
We're all in this together.
And we can't wait to help you succeed.
Go Cardinals.
All right. Thank you, Laura.
And everybody.
Okay, board, any comments or questions?
Well, I, I was going to wait my turn. I thought Todd had something and so I'll, I'll just wait. I don't want you to go away though.
Oh, no, no, Christine, I'm fine. I just had that one question earlier for Larry.
Okay, well, like Rick said, my gosh, there was a lot of information. But good information. I mean, really good. So I don't know, I don't know how to touch on every one of them. I don't want them to feel left out because all of them are doing tremendous work. From, you know, the administration leading from the top, all the way down through faculty, staff. It's just incredible, the efforts that have been made through this pandemic that no one ever imagined you would have to do. And the way people have stepped up and been creative, we have all the smart people on campus. It's just awesome. But you really have just done an incredible job. I'm sure you hear this all the time from the administration, but it, it is really very impressive. And I don't know where we'll end up this fall. But I do know that with all of you together working on it, we're going to end up somewhere good. Our citizens are not our citizens, our students are still going to have a quality education delivered, no matter what format is chosen or what we all decide we need to do. I'm just so incredibly proud of the institution and all that you've done and all you've showed us tonight. And Rick, I, I really, really appreciate your leadership through this. So those are my comments as a board member.
Thank you, Trustee Wood. Any other comments? All right. Next is the board chair's report. And my report is very, very brief. What, what I would like to do is to reiterate and continue on with a little bit of what Trustee Wood had to say. And it's not just the college's response to the COVID-19 crisis that has been so amazing and has absolutely blown me away. But if you look back over the course of this year and look at the yeoman's efforts put into accreditation, everything that all of you have done, the success of that accreditation. And then you look at with, if you look at the budget constraints we've been dealt and all of the sacrifices that have gone into putting together a coherent and credible budget. And then of course, the response to COVID-19 as well as the effort that went into the virtual graduation for our students. So I can't tell you how happy I am, amazed at what all of you have done and really appreciate all of your hard work. Now, the only question in my mind is, as we emerge from all of these challenges over the course of this next year, what will we become? Because we are not going to be the same institution we were a year ago or six months ago. And so as we move forward and you look to the future and try and envision what that looks like, I would suggest that we, we look at the alternative ways we do our business and what that means for us in the future and what we can come so that, what we can become so that we do emerge as a stronger, better and more efficient organization. So again, thank you all so very, very much. Are there any remarks for the good of the order? Hearing none?
No, Mr. Chair, I do. Well, I wanted to, if Chris Pillchat is still with us, I wanted to just revisit some earlier discussion. Just from one trustee, my perspective. I would ask Chris, between now and the time when the board convenes again to, to pass the final budget, to talk to, talk to faculty assembly and have some really good discussions about what it will look like. If, if the board has to, okay, did I lose everybody? What it will look like if the board has to make some tough decisions and maybe some of the options about holding back a step for half a year or maybe implementing the full step or no step at all, those are all things that will be discussed. I've been in their shoes and, you know, for 26 years with an organization that actually had signed contracts. But I can tell you that when times were really, really difficult, the group that I was with, they had a signed contract for a 3% COLA. And the group stepped up during the recession because they knew that everybody was kind of in the same boat, that the, the money just wasn't there. So there is creativity. I'm not, I'm one board member. I'm not suggesting that the board will not fund the step. But I do want you to all give some good consideration to when's the time, when is it appropriate? We just passed this policy last year and I think the board has every intention, any chance we can of funding the 3% step. I know I do. If you lose part of it, if you lose all of it, it, there is a possibility you will never get it back. Depends on your longevity. Sometimes the board come back in a better year and try to make it up. And so I've been, I've been that person that never made it up again. But I think when you look at the whole of an organization, you have to take some considerations into account. And so I, I would just like those healthy discussions about what it might mean for a mid-year step. And when we visit again in August, really have those heartfelt conversations. That's all.
I can do that.
Thanks, Chris.
Any other comments for the good of the order? Hearing none, we are adjourned.